The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children and proudly we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
First item of business is approval of the official agenda. You'll look through it, please, and see if you have any items that would be qualified for consent.
Mr. Mayor and Board, for your consideration, I would offer the following items for possible placement on the consent agenda. Those items being under Roman numeral ten, Mayor's Business, A and B. Roman numeral twelve, Departmental Business, Airport, A, all the six items there. D is in dog, the Courts, the item there. E, the Electric Department, the two items there.
Mr. McLong.
Excuse me, Roy.
Excuse interruption. I agree with that. Would you just kind of briefly let us know for the public about once we approve item E one? What's the current status of that? Basically, I just want you to just mention that where we stand, that once we approve it, we're ready for demolition.
Certainly. We can ask Mr. Hathaway to give an update.
Yes, sir.
F Personnel, all five items there. And G Public Services, the one item there.
Does anyone have any deletions or any additions?
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, before approval of the agenda under Board Business, I would like
Richard, did you want us to quit off the sitter? Okay, with those particular items of consent, do I hear approval of this?
Just one second.
Yes.
Ed is here. Mr. Hathaway Alderman Perkins said that he had no objection to the item on asbestos removal being placed on the consent agenda, but would like to hear an update of where we stand to add an item F. on the Electric Department project. And that is consideration of an appointment to the Planning, Zoning Commission to fill the unexpired term from Ward Three.
We actually received an application, too?
Okay. Is everybody clear of the direction of the agenda, in which we have several? Most of the agenda is consent, with the addition under vacancy Ward Three on planning and zoning. Do I hear a motion that we approve the official agenda?
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second in further discussion. If not, all those in favor of approval, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Approval of the minutes, the city staff of Board of Alderman recess meeting on June the nineteenth will take each one. We have several. June the nineteenth, July the seventeenth, and August the seventh, and the call meeting of August the thirteenth will take each and every one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the approval of the June nineteenth, two double oh seven minutes.
Alderman Davis, would it be possible, as has been done in the past, there are still some structural deficiencies in the minutes? Nothing of substance, but subject to the necessary corrections. And I would second that.
Motion, second, that we approve the minutes of June the nineteenth, subject to some rearranging or whatever.
Technical correction.
Technical corrections. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Brings us down to the regular meeting of July the seventeenth.
I would make a motion that the July seventeenth, two double oh seven minutes, the recess meeting, be approved, subject again to the necessary technical correction.
Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Brings us down to August the seventh.
Mayor and Board, I would move approval of the August seventh, two thousand and seven minutes.
Again, all the current subject to any necessary technical correction.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Passes, and we're down to August the seventh.
Mayor and Board, I would move approval of the August seventh, two thousand and seven minutes.
Again, all the current subject to any necessary technical correction.
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion, the second, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. All right, the call meeting of August thirteenth.
Move approval of August thirteenth, two thousand and seven minutes, with any necessary structural correction.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, with a second, we approve the meetings, call meeting of August thirteenth, all those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Comments by Mayor and the Board of Alderman? The comment I have, you'll notice some of the new emblems that we finally got painted after a year in the center of the streets, University Drive of Mississippi State, emblem that we placed in the middle of the street. There've been a lot of comments from citizens wanting to know what's going on with the main street, in which we have part of it's been milled, the surface taken out. We had that done. Mr. Devlin from the Water Department came in and said, "Let's don't overlay until we've had a chance to put water lines replaced." It makes a lot of sense. And we are now about, I believe, Mr. Devlin, about to complete that. Is that not correct now? What does that mean? Ten days?
Yeah, I understand, pulling valves off, filling holes up with water.
And, you know, it wouldn't be Starfall if we did not have road construction going on when school starts. So that's part of the criteria of waiting, Ms. Bill. If you'll remember, all of your time on board, it's always, when school was started, that we started paving roads and doing some improvements. But we're getting there, and we will be replacing some six-inch lines, is that right, Mr. Devlin? With ten-inch lines, and we will be repaving as soon as we get all that construction in place. Any Alderman have anything they'd like to say at this time?
Yes, Mayor. If I may be correct.
Yes.
Yesterday, we had a budget committee meeting over here, and a lot of discussion. Alderman Cox worked very hard on proposal. I put forth the alternate proposal on the salary for general fund employees, which was unfortunately inaccurately reported in the paper. And so, I want to take this opportunity to address that and also tweak it a little bit on some issues that were brought up yesterday during the meeting. First off, a five percent cost of living raise to general fund employees costs the city three hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-five dollars. Now, we've all talked about external equity issues with various departments and within this city for a long time, year after year after year after year. We have a situation within particularly, and let me say this, all of our departments are under that strain, some more so than others. Police Department is one such department that is specifically feeling the strain of external equity issues. In that, I mean, you have a starting salary at the Police Department, which is significantly lower than the Oktibah County Sheriff's Department. That's in the same county. You know, that doesn't even count the three, well, two to three people we've lost to Highway Patrol for more money. It's becoming a very real issue because we're losing some of our most talented, the best and brightest within our police force. With that in mind, Chief Lindley had come up with a pay adjustment for police personnel to help try to close that gap between other law enforcement agencies. And this doesn't even close the gap to the Oktibah County Sheriff's Department as their salary is today, not counting any potential raise they could receive this year, which would put them even further ahead. So, with all that said, I would say, full consideration, if we looked at a three percent cost of living raise for general fund employees excluding Police Department personnel and those employees within the city service that make under seventeen thousand five hundred dollars, that's going to cost us one hundred twenty thousand dollars six hundred and fifty-four. There are seven positions that are making under seventeen thousand five hundred dollars right now. To bring those seven positions up to that level, which we've all, I believe, formed some consensus that that ought to be a minimum standard for city employees, that would cost another seven thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars. Now, to the Police Department's pay adjustment, or proposed pay adjustment, to place them on an appropriate grade and step closest to where they should be and try to maintain some semblance within our grade and step system, including the benefits, you're looking at two hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. All of that a grand total of four hundred and one six thirty-seven. So, the difference between just a five percent cost of living for general fund employees, I'm stressing, this is general fund employees, it's not enterprise employees, enterprise fund employees, be fifty-four thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars, the difference between the three percent plus to pay adjustment, plus bringing the seven up to seventeen five hundred, it's a difference of fifty-four thousand six hundred and forty-two dollars. Now, I make that as a proposal, and somebody could say, "That's a lot of money." Of course, keep in mind that this fits within the constraints of Mr. Cox's balanced budget that he presented yesterday, and that he had a five hundred thousand dollar rainy day fund built into that budget. Still leave, if you took that money out of that fund, you still have a sizable, healthy rainy day fund. So I offer that as a proposal, and take this opportunity just to clarify statements that were made in the paper inaccurately, for whatever reason, and throw that as a proposal, an alternative, to just a straight five percent cost of living raise, cost of labor for general fund employees, understanding that we need to start addressing these issues. We can't do it all right now within our budget, but if we don't start somewhere, we're never going to start. If we don't do it now, when are we going to do it? So, Mr. Mayor, I will yield the floor.
Mr. Mills?
I've got several issues that I'd like to take with that proposal, fact that I've been in law enforcement with the Sheriff Department, and we keep bringing this up, the Police Department, the Sheriff Department, and the Highway Patrol. There is no relation to their work duties and their responsibilities. The city policemen have a certain amount of policemen within a very close range of work, where they have plenty of F backup and so forth. The deputy sheriffs at times only have maybe one, two, and three that is patrolling this entire county. The Highway Patrol at times has a twenty mile square that they are covering. They're trained differently, and you cannot compare a policeman and a Highway Patrolman and a deputy sheriff. I understand that we need to pay our employees, but I think the biggest injustice that the Board of Supervisors and the Mayor can make, and that is singling out of department and paying them differently from what the rest of the employees of the city are making. These can be used at certain times by the department head, is strictly, it's an intimidation, because, "Look what I did for you." So it's a constant intimidation if we pick out a particular department and give them a substantial increase over employees of the city. For two years, I have complained and brought it to people's attention on this board about paying seventeen thousand dollars to a guy that's got to watch for his life, constantly jumping up and down on the back of a garbage truck and picking up garbage at a hundred degrees or thirty degrees. There's no consideration given there, that his job is important, too. So we need to be paying him accordingly, so if you're going to start compensating people, you need to start at the bottom, and then we can work up. Because I'll tell you what I did two years ago. I made a spreadsheet right here of the city employees that's on the Police Department that take their cars home with them. They travel eighty-six thousand two hundred and thirty miles per year, take home cars that are costing forty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars. Thirty-six percent of our policemen were taking their cars home with them outside the city limit. I got no response whatsoever from the other Aldermen about it. I talked to the chief and asked him, "Who gave you authority to do so?" "Well, Jim, we've been doing that for years. That is not authority." So what I'm saying is, we need to get things in proportion, and I think it would be doing a citizen an injustice, and the employees of Stark an injustice by paying any more than across-the-board percentage of increase. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to voice any opinions at this time?
Mr. Mills, while I appreciate your comments and your law enforcement expertise as to the duties and responsibilities of Starfall Police Department vis-à-vis the Oktibah County Sheriff's Department and/or the Mississippi Highway Patrol, it still doesn't change the fact that we are losing police officers to other law enforcement agencies due to lack of pay. And, like I said, this is a problem that we have faced in other departments at other times, and Mr. Hathaway has brought forth in the past proposals to take care of his line because of the same issues, and we did that outside of any other department getting that pay raise. He has done a similar thing this year, and keep in mind, this proposal is only general fund departments. So, you know, we have to start addressing these issues. If not, we will continue to lose valuable employees, valuable experience and knowledge that are well-trained, well-qualified, certified, that we, as a city, have invested a lot of money in, sending them to various schools for their specific professional certifications. Does this address the entire problem? No. I'll say it doesn't address the entire problem. But, under the climate in which this board was operating in the board budget meeting, I think this proposal lives within Alderman Cox's balanced budget proposal that he had, it just changes how we do the salaries.
Yes, would you like to say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, not to repeat anything that Alderman Davis said, we have a serious matter of market equity here with regard to our police officers. When a graduate of the academy can go here, there, or yonder for six thousand dollars minimum, or that they can come to the Starfall Police Department, then we are not keeping in tune with market equity and what is happening outside in the real world. We lose all sorts of money through training of police officers, and then they move to a higher-paying position in order to compete with the other law enforcement agencies. We simply need to make this adjustment. Again, this is a first adjustment on some equity problems that we need to make. There are equity problems in some of the other departments. We have talked about this for a number of years. There has never been the desire to start doing what we need to do, and it's time now to begin the process.
Are we giving any consideration to the other employees of the city? No. If you're going to do that, you're looking down on them as they are not worth what they're being paid, and that's the way they're looking at it. Now, let me say this, I have had the opportunity to talk to three policemen. Two of them retired, one leaving here, and not one of the three of them mentioned pay. And I will not discuss what they mentioned, but pay was not involved in them leaving the Police Department. And any police, law enforcement, they've got to go to school, you've got to complete courses in the academy to be eligible to do police work. So, you know, these guys that's working out here on the Street Department, I have a great admiration for the elected people, Ed Hathaway. He has a small turnover, he does a good job in managing his people. And the policemen we've lost is only four percent in two years. That's great. You know, that's to be commended. Four percent. You need to check around to these other law enforcement, but the university out here or the local factories and see what their turnover is. So, you know, I don't know how we can stand up here and justify giving some employees a higher pay than the other, and they're doing the same job equitably. They may not be toting a gun or a badge, but they're toting a shovel and a pick, and both of them are important to the city of Stark.
One final comment, Mayor. No one has said anything about the value of city employees to what happens in this city. All city employees are important. We need to do the best that we can to compensate, train, work toward promotion for all city employees in all departments. When there arise market equity problems in some specific areas, they must be addressed, whether this be law enforcement officers, whether it be wastewater treatment plant operators that have to have certain certifications, whether this be sanitary landfill operators that need certain specific training. We must provide the training, we must provide a market salary for those employees that have technical skills that we've got to have to operate a city.
Okay, we'll cut it off at this point. We'll move on with, in our agenda, with citizen comments. This is the opportunity, we citizens have the opportunity to come up and take three minutes only to express their thoughts of the city. All right, this is not the public conference, yet, but which we have two groups, Becky and another witness. Welcome back, Mr. Turner. We missed you at the last meeting.
Agreed, and Lionel did. Election primaries had me tied up at the same meetings, so I wasn't here. I don't know if that make anyone glad or sad. These citizens have just a couple concerns. The orange boughs and stuff that's on the sidewalk here, it began to be hesitant because we got more people in town and trying to go around, that is dangerous. Someone might run red light. And we are, couldn't understand what Mr. Hathaway was saying at the meeting, we couldn't get no sound, voice sound, and that just concerns ourselves.
Couldn't get him voice sounds for what now?
Mr. Hathaway was speaking to him, but we couldn't hear what he was saying.
I see. Okay, what he was saying is, I believe, that they're going to have asbestos removed from the properties that we purchased, and as soon as the asbestos is removed, and we just approve the knife for it to be removed, we will start immediately upon demolition of the old mud and compound.
All right, okay.
Anyone else would like to say something?
Mayor, for Alderman, I'm Stan Sheridan. My wife and I opened a Starfall Recycling here on September the third, I mean, September of '03. Just want to give you a little update on how things are going with us. On our first year, we diverted over twelve hundred tons of recyclers from the landfill. This year, we have grown to a whopping three thousand tons. This material is generated from our residents using drop-off bins located all throughout the city, and a great deal of it is also from the merchants, factories, and different people throughout the city that has businesses and using our front loader bins placed at their businesses. I want to thank you, Mayor and Board, for your support on recycling throughout the city, and have hopes of continuous growth. I'd also like you to take in consideration when drafting and adopting the new sanitation ordinance as to not to hamper any recycling efforts throughout the city. Thank you.
I believe you wanted to speak.
I just want to make a comment. I've not done this before, I may not be doing the right thing, I don't know.
Well, you look like you've done very well. Just sit down, Phil.
But I'm Carol Nosefaw from Starfall Electric. I've talked to several Aldermen, Mr. Davis, Mr. Blarn, Matt, Roy, a lot of times about the ladies in the city, which they seem to be left out a lot of times. And all the people you were talking about today, ninety-nine, forty-nine percent of those people are men. And I know that ladies do a good job in the city, and we work hard at Starfall Electric. And you're talking about raising the salary from seventeen thousand, starting at seventeen thousand? Have you forgotten what we start? Have you forgotten what we started out at? And we haven't got much above that yet. We've been there like 90, 10, and 15 years. So, I just wanted you to know that we're not happy ourselves, that we did a little morale boost ourselves. And I know our guys work out in the field, they do all those things, but we're all in the office doing things to give them a job out in the field to work from. And I just, you know, we should think about that. And if we could have a 3% raise, a 3% of nothing is nothing. If you make 45 or 50,000 dollars a year, you've got a good raise. But if I had 5% on my salary, I'd make 89 dollars more a month. And if Mr. Hattaway probably had 5% of his salary, he might make 5,000 more a year. So, that's a lot to think about. One year we had where everybody made 100 dollars more a month, if it was me or Mr. Hattaway. That was the only fair way this ever been done. So, if you're helping the little person by making a percentage raise, you don't help them at all. You're helping the people that make a lot of money, make more money. So, that may be a little food for thought for you, and I know that you think I'm probably crazy if you're saying this, but somebody's gotta say something somewhere along the way. I've been there 10 years, and I have thought for 10 years. I spent my vacation, when you're calling back to the Budget Committee, trying to get help from the ladies. None. So, I'd like for y'all to think about that.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Melissa Dixon, and I'm representing the Starkville Downtown Business Association. I just wanted to deliver a letter to the Board that endorses the, it states, "The support from the Downtown Business Association of the Johnny Cash Flower Picking Festival." And if you don't mind, I'm gonna read it real quick. It's very short. "The Starkville Downtown Business Association supports the Johnny Cash Flower Picking Festival to be held in Starkville November 2nd through 4th, 2007. Reasons the Starkville Downtown Business Association is promoting this event: notoriety from his song about Starkville, notoriety of his events of his life and rehabilitation, and the potential for this festival to promote all of Starkville by bringing new people to town for hotels, restaurants, and shopping. The association joins with the festival organizers in asking and appreciating the city's cooperation with this event." And I just have the copies. I'm just gonna leave.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Anyone else that wants to say anything as such?
I'm Jason Barrett. Nice to meet you. I've met in a...
What board did that mean?
Maybe it was in my Board Board.
I spoke to several of you over the past week or so, and this actually spurred, I guess, a lot of the false numbers that were in the paper. And I don't know if y'all can actually answer my question, but basically, as far as reiterating and going over what Sumner spoke about, I'm all for everybody getting raises that work for the, any type of determination, because I know a lot of them are underpaid throughout time. But I also agree with them doing this within the balanced budget. So, I really like Sumner's proposal as far as keeping it within the budget, because I'm a property owner here in Starkville, and maybe not as much as some folks, but I know I own more property than a lot. So, as far as increasing the adware tax, that's what I was against, because I was really liking Matt's idea of keeping it within our budget. So, as far as Ward One and several people that I've spoken to, they were interested in trying to keep it within the budget as well without raising it at 0.6%, whatever that percentage was.
You're gonna tell that the supervisors are saying the same thing?
I will, if I need to.
Yes, sir.
Matt Cox, this is Ward Michael Queasy. I just want to reiterate what the spokesman for the downtown association said. I think this Johnny Cash Festival will be very good for the town. And not only that, the 2% restaurant tax is used to support it. I think it's excellent use of that money. Probably will bring in more people per dollar than the soccer fields that we're spending $5 million on over 10 years or whatnot. And I think to give them $10,000 to help them, if they can bring in 1/10th as many people as they say they might, I think it's a good use of that restaurant tax, that people that pay that tax, the restaurants that get charged that, that it will help them. It's appropriate use of that tax. I just want to reiterate my support for the Johnny Cash Festival. I hope y'all not only support it, but support the money.
Anyone else who'd like to have their three minutes?
I say one more minute.
Oh, you've had your three minutes.
I didn't have three.
You've had over three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Board. And I did hear what Alderman Davis said, and Alderman Mills, and Mac Laren. And I'm not here to speak on that. Back in July of 2005, this board designated or proclaimed August 26th as Travis Outlaw Day, and I just want to say thank you. And since then, we have had just an annual day in the park, and it's just celebrating that occasion. And I'm here to invite you to the third annual Travis Outlaw Day to be held at 10 o'clock to 3:00 at McKee Park, Saturday, August 25th. And if there's anyone that you know that is interested in participating in a three-on-three basketball tournament or a T-shirt contest design, then we'll have them to design a T-shirt for us and see if they win. There'll be free food, prizes, games, and just all-around wholesome fun.
Free food?
Free food.
Free food.
Free food. And we sincerely, and we really do, want you to come out and join in the club. Thank you.
Mark, you did what you was.
25th.
Just try and say it.
And we have that word that some of the Trailblazers video will be there, so we'd like if someone could come out and just speak with us.
That brings us, if there are no one else, if there's no one else that would like to up and speak this time, you would like to speak?
I just want to say something concerning the budget. If I had come up here to represent the sanitation department, I would not be the head of the department. But I want you to know, the skillness that you're talking about with the police department, they are a great department. They have skills. Sanitation department, they also have skills. Let's take in consideration the employees of the City of Starkville.
Are your people paid out of the general fund?
No, sir, they're not.
That's what we told them about tonight.
I know that, and that's why I'm saying to them, I am for them getting the money they need out of the general fund. That's what I'm, I can't understand. All right?
Thank you. Any other department heads or general public would like to get up and use their three minutes? You've had your three minutes. We're ready to move on then if we have no more public appearances. We have two public appearances tonight, one by a group of homeowners in regard to the burning within the city limits. Terry, I see you out here, and I see a group out there in Academy Village in Timber Cove. Who is gonna be the spokesperson?
I can go first as spokesman. My name's John Gask, and I'm with...
All right, all of you want to speak?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were telling me.
No, I'm just, are you gonna have a spokesperson that all of you want to speak?
All those four want to speak.
All these four want to speak, all right. Who would like to go first? Johnny, you gonna go first?
I'll go first. Mine's very short.
I'm looking at it. They are sitting out here in the sights. Ricky Gray, do you wanna go first? Where's Ricky?
Ricky will go first.
Have you already sat there in here? Or you have?
I'm the representative from Academy Village.
You'd be more comfortable sitting there?
No, so I'm fixing to pass out some pictures that I'd like for you to look at with consideration. These are pictures of vehicles from Academy Village from the two weeks of burning that Morgan Construction did in Academy Village with their new development. And over the period of the two weeks, my car progressively changed colors, and it's not something that just washes off with the rims. And Mr. Mills, I'm glad you brought up consideration earlier, because we're open for a little consideration if there isn't a proposal change for the burning. Myself, I went around the first night when I actually noticed my car and kind of figured out what was going on with the burning and why it was happening. And I know that there is a, you can get a permit if you're a construction developer and for two weeks, and you can burn pretty much as much as you want to without any obligation to asking the people who live around the area where you're burning. And I've got several pages of signatures from people who live in the area from different subdivisions, including Academy Village, Academy Place, and one of Morgan Construction's townhouse areas, people from there. And they were all in agreement that they had an idea that it was going to happen, and we, we, I mean, we were really mad. A lot of us had, you know, purchased vehicles newly, and it just started changing colors. And we were just hoping that something could be done about this so that it doesn't happen in the future. It's a nuisance, and some of the people that I talked to that actually had health problems such as asthma. One guy said he wouldn't go outside after a certain time, because at night they usually are burning more. And even after I got finished walking for the two and a half hours getting signatures the first night, my voice changed. It was more crackly than it is actually now, as nervous as I am. And my eyes were burning really bad when I finished. And this was only after two hours. Had kids been in school at Academy, or at Starkville Academy, they would've had parents calling them every day until something was done about it. And I'm just wanted to let y'all know that that was happening over there. And what if someone was putting in a new development outside where you live, and you had your kids or your grandkids or your nieces and nephews playing outside, and just rain of ash was falling down on them constantly for two weeks? Just how would that make you feel? I just wanted to let y'all know that we would like something done about it. And I have plenty more pictures of vehicles if you want to see those, as well as plants and other things.
Mr. Hayes, I believe he is the next one on the list.
Dan Derwell.
Oh, okay.
I'm Island Dan Derwell of the Timber Cove Homeowners, and I know I've spoken to most of you before, and I appreciate that you always give us the respect of your time. I concur with everything my neighbor said, and I commend him for the pictures, which I didn't have foresight to take. And just the concerns that we've heard, basically the same he said. And one concern we heard in the beginning, when there was the, we could smell it before we could actually see the smoke, we sort of thought, well, this is a one or two-day thing. We don't really like it, but we can deal with it for one or two days. And it progressed day after day after day after day. The concern about with our heat wave, we've had several people that have gotten a lot of the soot in their yard, have been out every night with the sprinkler because they're afraid of fire, which, you know, that's something we shouldn't have to deal with on a daily basis. And one of my neighbors even said, "You need to go out in your yard every night and see how much soot you've got." Well, I travel a lot in my job, you know, and I'm not home every night, and I want the security of knowing if a tragedy does happen, it's not because of something of this nature, that it would be a terrible, something unusual and infrequent in nature. We are concerned about the air quality also. As my neighbor again said, you know, some people have respiratory issues. There are other people with children, there are elderly people, and I and Alderman McLaren and some of us have four-legged children who play out in the backyard a lot, and I'm just as concerned about my canine children breathing this type of air. And my husband and I one night went to wash our cars with the soot, and we went through the car wash twice. And at the drive-through that we go to, it's not cheap. We went through twice with both of our cars, and we still had some soot on it. So, it is a problem. And again, we're not, we're not saying we don't want the development, we're not saying we don't want progress. We're just saying we thought the burning would be a one or two or three-day thing, and it's come into where it's continually, and also, we don't know if anyone is even monitoring what all is burning. Some are saying other things are being brought into burn. I have no knowledge of that, but that someone would monitor it and ensure that it is, if it is within the city ordinance, that it could be somehow limited, and that everything that's over there, if it could possibly not all be burned, that you would consider that the health of our whole neighborhood as well as our town. Because there are other people in the neighborhood that don't necessarily live there that are coming there for different reasons. And we do appreciate your consideration.
Terry, I think you're next on the list.
Okay.
Given the structured list, if you'd go first.
All right, sure. My name's Terry Crowe. I live in Academy Place. I would just like to reiterate what they've said. We did have a lot of problems with smoke and haze, lots of ash. All of us have homes now that smell like the fireplace had been burning for several months. It's really, my concern is not really so much about this particular development, but really more about the City of Starkville. I think, you know, it's time to maybe implement a no-burn ordinance in the city, move into 21st century. Toyota, for example, when they cleared land at Blue Springs, required that there be absolutely no burning on that property when those thousands of acres were cleared for the plan. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Sure. John, where's that you now?
I apologize for my lack of protocol, but I'm here on behalf of Academy Place and the residents as well. I know that there were several people in our neighborhood who complained about having respiratory problems, go to the doctor. You know, the biggest problem that I have with the burning that occurred, I don't necessarily cite Mr. Morgan's land, the city gave him the license to do it. The fact of the matter is, when he's allowed to burn on Saturdays and Sundays when people are at home trying to enjoy the property that they're paying taxes on, as well as when you burn for a solid two weeks, and that's approximately 80 acres of land back there, and you think of the amount of rubbish from harvesting that timber that was back there. It was a significant amount of burning. And I would just like to ask that the city consider either a burn ban or some type of controlled process. I was told that there was a few times out there at night that the fire was going, that people were not seen out there around the fire at 12, 1 o'clock in the morning. You know, when you look at the value of the property around there, I know in our neighborhood you have approximately 84 houses. You look at about $150,000 a house, do the math. You know, if a fire breaks out, you know, that could be significant to the city and as well as to the owners who would have a loss. When you look at the health of the individuals around, I just feel that there could be better solutions to burning than just allowing, you know, a contractor to burn at will simply because they have a license to do so. I have one very good friend, I'm not gonna bring his name up, but he's a contractor here in Starkville. He has cleared land for and burned, and what he did before he did it was, he went around to the neighbors to inform them of what he was doing, as well as brought in commercial fans to help blow the smoke high enough to where it wouldn't be going directly into a yard to help dissipate it. You know, if there was some proactive thinking on solutions that would be better for everybody involved, I realize a lot of times large acres, large tracts of land, that that's pretty costly to haul every single bit out, as well as the fact when you look at a total burn ban, you know, what about your little person, you know, who just has a little pile of leaves to burn or something like that? I think if there was some proactive solutions on the part, you know, of the city as well as contractors here to work together to come up with a solution, it would be better for the people, the health of the people, and just the city as a whole. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. That concludes the presentation by the representatives of the various areas of Academy Village in Timber Cove in regard to trying to get the city to implement a more comprehensive as what I read to burn policy in regard to burning. We will now move to the presentation. Becky, we're ready for you to give an annual report about the Red Cross.
And I would like to assure these people from Timber Cove that if their houses do catch fire, Red Cross is there and ready to help. I'm gonna help you catch up on time, gentlemen and ladies. As you know, Red Cross asks that we present an annual report to city government each year, and that's what I'm here to do. Most of you know that Red Cross is chartered by Congress but receives no funds from the government. Any money that we expend is raised locally, some of it from you. This year marks the 90th year for Red Cross in October Hawk County, so it certainly is an occasion to celebrate. We've grown from a one-room, part-time office to a full-time office with more than 200 volunteers. I'd like to recognize the volunteers who are here today. If y'all would stand up for just a minute. And especially gentlemen...
And especially Jim Henson, who has served as our president for the last two years and got us through Katrina and a lot of transition. And Jim, we do appreciate your work. In 2007, our chapter provided assistance to 33 families who were victims of single-family house fires. This year, we've already had an apartment fire that we've helped two families with. We've provided more than 2,000 people with health and safety training, including the people who oversee the city swimming pools. We've provided community disaster presentations or demonstrations to more than 1,500 people. We've helped 33 military families in emergency situation contact loved ones. We've provided financial assistance to veterans to ensure medical care in 17 different cases. We've collected 72 units of blood in a campus and community blood drive with the potential of saving more than 216 lives. This week, I was working with a family. The wife was expecting their second child. They had just lost their home in a fire. It was their first home, first house they'd ever had. The husband still had that thousand-yard stare that you see sometimes in a case like that when your whole life has just been turned upside down. He couldn't quite take it all in. Their home had burned to the ground, they lost two pets, they lost their baby pictures, they lost their nursery they had set up for the new baby. We worked through all the forms that were required by Red Cross to make sure that nobody's taking advantage of you and make sure it's a valid report. And the man looked at me and he said, you know, the worst thing about this is having to ask people for money. And that's kind of how I feel. I don't like asking people for money. But I do this because I represent your constituents when they're at their weakest. When they've lost their home, when they faced a disaster, I'm here for them, and that's why I'm here tonight. They don't come to you, they come to Red Cross. Last year, we received $5,000 from the city of Starkville. Since July 1, we've already spent more than that on fires alone. We haven't even started tornado season yet and we still have hurricanes forming out in the Gulf. The help we give a person when they come to Red Cross is a pair of clothes to wear, a set of clothes to wash, one to wash and one to wear. We give them enough money. For a family of four, you get $115. We try to help you get through three days because we're an immediate disaster relief agency. We're trying to get you to the point where you can get to that agency that is long-term relief or get to your family. In the South, that's where most people turn. Each year, we pay the National Organization a fee to maintain our chapter here. Last year, it was $8,000. This year, it's going to be $12,000. There are only 14 chapters from Red Cross left in Mississippi. We don't want to make that 13 by not being able to support this chapter. We asked for a comparison of what other cities in the area put into their Red Cross budgets. Columbus puts in $15,200 and provides a suite of office space at no charge for their chapter. West Point puts in $5,000 to that chapter, the same that you put into ours. Vicksburg puts $12,000 into their chapter's budget. Tupelo has a building built by the Hancock Foundation. They don't pay rent. We have asked $15,000 this year from you as a city to help keep our chapter viable to keep it growing. The people who benefit from our services are your constituents, and they are at least as important as the horses, the pets, the festivals, the books, the artwork. We ask that you seriously consider stepping up your support for Red Cross. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your healthcare needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia Hough County Hospital, we are celebrating 30 years of being your lifelong choice in healthcare.
Board?
Yes, sir.
Did you get with Mr. Faber, maybe correct some of those?
I did, I did. Mr. Mayor, all the items that go before the Board of Adjustment now are eligible for appeal to the Board of Alderman. That was the major change that was made. I talked to Mr. Faber and I made one additional change. For the variance application or for variance requests, we had an application format. We decided that it probably better to go ahead and do that for administrative appeals as well. So there's a, there'll be a separate application form for that. I already have the application for the variances complete. I should have the one for administrative appeals complete as well. That way, there's more of a formal process to apply, to make the requests, just to make them consistent, to try to keep both appeals, administrative appeals and variances consistent across the board. So that was the other, the other change that was made. I know that wasn't discussed, but just trying to keep everything consistent, I thought that would be in the best interest and Mr. Faber agreed, and that's been revised as well.
To bring the public up to the speed of what we're doing here, several years ago in a conference plan, there was a, there was a sense of direction to get rid of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals. Since Mr. Griffin has been on board here, he feels like it's really a very viable board. It does a lot of work in regard to making adjustments to side yards for people that don't quite have the space or other similar issues as such like this. And tonight, this hearing is aimed to keep and continue this Board of Adjustment and Appeals because we feel like it really performs a very important function in the city. Is that not the gesture?
Yes, sir.
And at this time, if anyone would like to get up and say they don't want the Board of Appeals or whatever, you have an opportunity to speak in regard to the keeping or getting rid of the Board of Appeals and Adjustments to Appeals. Sounds like a pretty good idea, Ben. All right, thank you.
I hope so.
If you'll get Ms. Ball to join you for the second public hearing.
She is.
This is actually the second time that this public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind you, there's a, there's a resolution that goes along with the ordinance for fees which cover the cost of advertisement. Just make sure that we do, do both to be included with that. They are, there's an ordinance in a, in a resolution for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Right. Okay, this item is a hearing on the matter of repealing and replacing the city of Starkville solid waste ordinance, and I believe that the trash committee worked with you all. And I believe the only person in the trash committee was there was Mr. McLaurin.
Mr. Mayor, just to correct that, we had a technical review committee that took a look at some of the concerns expressed by Board of Alderman. We have yet to have our committee meeting on this, which we will do in the next several days.
Okay. But would you like to give us a gist of what this replacement is so that if we have any objections from the citizens that have an opportunity to say something? This will not be a final, you know, suggestion, put this off.
First was the concept of the corrals, open sided containers with wooden containers. We wanted to delete those that hold for multiple units, and we like to have those corrals outlawed. The second is the rubbish, the trash replaced at the roadside, and it's not to be covered by the contract, that's not covered by the contract with Starkville Recycling, will be picked up, which is non-conforming by the city of Starkville Sanitation Department. That does not.
Can you give us an example of what is non-conforming?
Sure, definitely. Non-conforming, well, conforming would be a lot easier. Conforming are brush limbs of trees that have been cut down, no longer than seven feet in length, five inches in diameter, not over 20 yards. So they pick up refrigerators, but they have to be tagged by a licensed electrician before Starkville Recycling can pick it up. There are dressers, they pick up mattresses, they pick up just about anything that's inconfor- conforming, that's what's conforming.
Couches, chairs.
Couches, chairs. And you sit mattresses. Let's go with the non-conforming, Mary, if you would, if you would. It would be carpet, they would not, they would not pick up carpet, padding, tree stumps, let's say, e-waste, like a microwave, televisions, tires. Those are non-conforming items that they would.
I doubt that 90% of your citizens at this committee would not even know that or be aware of that because I've been driven around seeing lots of carpet and stuff thrown out all of y'all.
Yes, sir. Those type of things that we are now stating that we, we've been doing it and we will continue to do it without any feelings, sanitation department. Does that clarify? Are you having more questions concerning non-conforming and conforming?
Do any citizens at this point have any comments? Yes, ma'am. You can stay and stand where you are.
I'm dying of all the Timber Cove owners from the Sanitation Department, as residents from the work they do, and I also want to consider to contract, to say, so, and I appreciate y'all's efforts and the ties that I've worked with, and I appreciate your revising. I request that you continue some revision of the rules as well as, and maybe we're very fast with the rules. I appreciate the, hello to the, and.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Stan Schurden of Recycling. This proposed ordinance has a lot to do with recycling in. And most of the paragraphs has, the city's contractor for recycling is only one bit allowed to recycle throughout the city. The city of Starkville does not have a contractor for recycling, not privately owned, no warranty whatsoever. And I'd like to see that this can continue as it is, that a call to the city.
Ben and Sharon Almond, the same lines. I know we talked about plantation homes, their recycling efforts that they do out there. The Presbyterian Church does a great recycling effort. How did we clean up the first document to the second document as it relates to that to make sure that we're not discouraging recycling?
What we did was, we, let me go to it. What we did was, no one can pick up recyclables within the city of Starkville unless it's the city or the contractor, or contractor, that has a privileged license. Am I right, Ben? Or has a privileged license and with the city to pick up these recyclables. I believe Mr. Schurden does have a privileged license to pick up recycling because he's picking up the bins throughout the city, the four, on the four different areas. If, if, if he doesn't, let me know, Ben. Does he, does he not have a privileged license?
Oh, I don't know. It's the city's office. What we did on, on section eight, we revise the language to say that any contractor to pick up the recycling. So what, you know, if it's a private group or a charity or an organization that's, you know, they're allowed to, we revise the language. It says, you know, that it's prohibited for a contractor other than the city or a designated contractor. So an individual, and we talked about that for, you know, hiring the neighborhood kid to, you know, clean your yard up and haul things to the dump, those types of things. So we revised the language for that. I think, and we felt like that addressed the concerns that were brought up, you know, whether it's a private group or homeowner association or, you know, a church or other organization that does that.
So just to be clear, at plantation homes, we do basically once a month recycle.
Right.
We don't need to come into the city and get a permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And same thing with the church, we can continue to collect our recyclables from, from the community and all the members of.
Because those are not contractors.
Exactly. Why is it not?
Anyone else? Okay, if there's no one else to suggest.
We have one other thing. The screening of the containers, the dumpsters. Once the ordinance is passed, hopefully within 30 days, we will begin a screening process of seeing which one of the containers throughout the city are not up to, up to the standards on a case-by-case basis. Whereas I would go out and I would look and see that it's an eyesore, it's not, it's not an ordinance, conform, confirmation or whatever. And I would come back and I would let them know. And if there's any type of, of disagreement from the citizen or the business person, then therefore, he would appeal to you all. And that's the appeal process. We're going to start getting, getting all the containers screened, all the ones that were grandfathered in. Since Mr. Griffin has come in, we've started with the city planner going through each and every one, making sure that it's done before it's built. There's certain slab requirements that needs to be, that needs to be placed out there. There's the width, the depth, all that, screen enclosure and all that, and it's, it hasn't been done throughout the city. And it's time for it to be done. Like I said, it will be on case-by-case basis.
Any other citizens that would like to have a say at the, some of the new ordinances that we're trying to implement in regard to the trash collection and picking up? Yes, ma'am.
Richard, the committee will now meet and take a final look through this particular ordinance and hopefully would appear on the agenda of the next meeting for consideration.
I guess I code enforcement will have a lot of work to do, won't it?
Within, within this ordinance, we've placed within this ordinance also a time limit. If your garbage is picked up, is to be picked up on Tuesday. You can set your can, a rubber garbage can with wheels and it has to have a lid on it if you're going to put a garbage can out there. It has to have, have a lid on it. At 7:00 the day before your garbage is picked up, it has to be placed, you going to put 10 to 10?
10 to 10.
Oh, we did, we changed it to 7 to 10.
Curbs on 10 to 10.
Okay, from 10:00 PM the night, the day before, and 10:00 PM the night, the night, the day after that.
There's a time limit on when the cans can be out at the street. So if the cans are out there beyond those times on, on a day that's not a scheduled trash day, then that's a violation. And that's where code enforcement would issue first courtesy notice and then a, then follow-up. So there's a time limit. So people can put their trash out the night before and pick the cans up that day. So we came up with specific times for that because I know that's been an item of contention in the past.
So what are you going to do when students of some of these places put their garbage out the night before and the raccoons get into it and the possums get into it and you get garbage shrewd out all over the place? Are you going to go back and you going to find out whose garbage that is? I didn't say apartment complex, I'm just saying students.
Students. If that should happen, I believe we have over certain, in this, there's a certain amount of times that where it would happen, then we would contact the compliance officer and turn it over to them, and they would then be fined, the property owners would be fined. And that's when the judge, hopefully, the judge that we're hopefully.
Hearing officer.
Hearing officer, I'm sorry, will take over then for the non-criminal acts. We've come to the conclusion that someplace, sometime, we've got to have the landowners, the property owners, whether it's an apartment or house, what they have got to take responsibility, some responsibility. The owner of real property shall be responsible for furnishing adequate. The owner of real property shall be responsible for furnishing adequate refuse containers for the property as provided by the city. And they, if you own apartments, then, and those are your tenants, whatever they do, you're gonna pay for it.
Ms. Broyle, make sure that her tenants pay for it. I think she goes through the garbage herself and gets the names and charges.
I believe she also charged them the fee too.
She does.
That's good.
Very good then. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public hearing matter is that of, of increasing the ad valorem taxes. We've had citizens already in the three-minute period to, uh, express, uh, their thoughts in regard to that. We are required by law to have at least two public hearings on, uh, increasing the taxes. You've already heard original or the beginning of debate of salaries. This public hearing is not for an increase of salaries. Again, I would like to reiterate that it is a step of law that is required. If we get down to where we would like to see a tax increase in order to help to implement a capital improvement plan or capital improvements. This city for the last couple of years has gone to borrow monies every two years to fix the roads and fix the ditches. Fix the roads, fix the ditches. That, uh, and that's not gonna get it. I believe that the current budget proposal is three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars that is dedicated for roads and ditches. Is that not right, Mr. Cox? That would be left over on the current budget?
Rough numbers, yeah.
Just rough numbers. Uh, it costs us approximately five hundred thousand dollars a year to pay the loan back. And so just put your numbers together, that's not gonna cut it. Uh, I heard Mr. Mann in his budget request say within the next, what, five years we're about to have a new pumper or two years?
Two years.
Two years. Uh, does anybody have a guess what a new pumper truck costs? I asked the boy scouts last night and they said three thousand dollars, okay? And I said, how about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a new pumper truck? Uh, so we have a lot of issues that we're gonna be faced in the next several years. Uh, I'd like to say there's not been a tax increase in Starful on ad valorem tax in twenty-two years. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
Close there too.
Twenty-two years. We have one of the lowest millages in Mississippi or town our size. If we expect to have growth, we will have some sales tax growth. We will have growth from these other areas. And as I said before, this hearing is just basically technical so that we meet the letter of the law. And we will have one more public hearing in regard to, uh, the ad valorem taxes. Are there anyone else that would like to speak in regard to ad valorem tax other than the two individuals that already have? Uh, Mr. Ballenoff had his hand up first time.
Oh, that's fine.
Oh, y'all quit the debate. Come on.
Well, you've already stolen some of my thunder, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, I would like to make a couple of comments. And I would like to open with asking the question, why does Starful always have to be reactive rather than proactive? Why can we not plan ahead and do what we need to do for the betterment of this city? Are you sitting there to take care of your own personal interests? Or are you sitting there to try to do what's best for the city of Starful? I was going to say, Starful is the largest city in its category with the smallest millage, smallest millage rate. And this small rate has been in effect, I can personally attest to, since nineteen seventy-seven. And I called the city accountant today to try to verify about this tax increase, uh, twenty-two years ago. Because I was on the board twenty-two years ago. And I, the only ad valorem increase I remember was for the, uh, O C, O D, O C D E A or whatever for the CETA, for the development, uh, for, uh, the research park and that sort of thing. And that was on for a period of, I think, two or three years and then it rolled over. Uh, our millage has gone down since then. We, I checked with, um, a couple of cities today. I had some information from two years, from, excuse me, ten years ago. Uh, Flowood's, uh, millage is twenty mills. Pearl's is twenty-one point five mills. Last year, Chupalo raised their millage five mills. There was not, uh, burning at the cross or anything like that. They raised the millage for, uh, the necessary things that they needed to do for street improvement. We have been very fortunate, as Mr. Cox was quoted in the paper today saying about our sales tax and our building, uh, permit increases, property increases. That has been the saving grace for the city of Starful for the number of years that I have been associated with this city. If we had not grown, we would be in a real mess. I realize that a tax increase is not a popular thought and it's not what everybody wants. But when you get down to it, it's time for the city of Starful to begin to take care of what needs to be done. We have employees that are working basically at minimum wage. They're still hanging on. They don't want to leave Starful. They keep hoping for the best. We need to take care of the employees as well as taking care of the city. Mr. Perkins, I told you earlier, I was gonna, uh, disagree with you a little bit with your quote in the paper, but this won't be the first time we've been on opposite sides of the fence. Uh, I strongly disagree with your proposal to begin, uh, denying outside contributions. Mrs. Wilks just made a very excellent, uh, proposal, or proposal a while ago. Uh, I'm not sure when it's been since you've been in the, the city library to see the computers being used and how much, how much use they receive. And a lot of the people using the computers are citizens who are not able to afford a home computer. We have the, we have, as Ms. Wilks pointed out, we have people. We also have pets. We also have, uh, the museum. We have lots of organizations that need, uh, the city's help. I just cannot believe that it's so opposing to the majority of you all to not be in favor of a small ad valorem increase. That would help solve many of the problems that the city faces. And I know some of you are, and I feel like then that way, I feel like that I'm beating a dead horse with a net wet noodle. Uh, I just would ask you again, are you serving the city of Starful for what's best for the city? Or are you looking out for your own personal needs and what you want or don't want to do in the next couple of years? There should have been ta- ad valorem increases in this town for the last twenty years. A half a mill here, a mill here, another mill here, et cetera, et cetera. And we would be better, much better off. But apparently the majority of the board members are interested in their political future and whether they can be reelected rather than doing what's best for the city of Starful. So I strongly urge you to consider an ad valorem increase when you are making the final justification for your budget for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Richard, you wanted to?
I just have a comment. Um, just here, tax increase, first thing they can ask is to take food off the table and shoot it on the kids' feet. And I think what happens a lot, I mean, we don't have much, we're gonna be expecting a tax. And I think it'd be, well, worth the time, cover the money, paper. How much is this gonna affect the houses worth X number of dollars? And I think that sometimes you see how good it is for the competition to be able to play. But nonetheless, I think the public should be able to, how much is this gonna cost?
We'll have those figures out, uh, for the week is out, the paper published. Well before the next hearing that we have. Uh, yes?
Good evening, I am Officer Barry Cole, Officer Silas, and I have listened to this. First of all, Mr. Cox, I want to ask you a question, which has, you know, ad valorem taxes, what percentage is paid by homeowners versus businesses?
I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question.
Because I suspect probably just because of the numbers. I want to disagree with the statement, but the tax increase, which appears to be, and there might not have been a millage increase. Some of the issues of the tax increase, consequences, and that question, and just, those are sorts of, those are sorts of factors that weigh upon the free, the taxes. Before considering, asking citizens, I think we should publish budget, make it open. The last year, it was public, at Monday's ordinance, with a public presentation, our, some of the, I think, published proposed budget, all big, so that citizens, so citizens can ask input in the city council. I'm not going to extend how the budget taxes, additional taxes, which is expensive. Asking for a tax increase in this town, out of this information, we're being asked by the mayor to turn over blank checkbooks. We don't know what's in the budget. I certainly don't support a tax increase in this town. Not knowing, not knowing, saving the budget, you've been asked for a tax increase prepared from this, I think you would now be asked to rent the tax.
By the way, Mr. Cole, I think by ringing the towel, we could increase the revenues of this city by seven hundred thousand dollars.
Every time we, uh, say hyper hiring, efficient placement, hiring regular employees, I have been to every major corporation, I have to say to, I recall, I cannot recall, I've been to a lot of at least once in a year. Now, we don't see the sign of it, it's leaving, I would defend that, uh, opposed hiring employee. State is, place was, something's left. The parents is, we're adding, adding, adding. Now, I don't see, now, for example, uh, we're talking about increasing taxes, yet we're almost gonna twelve hundred dollars on shuttle buses. At this point, that's a, that's a, we're asked to paint logos with water tanks, projections that we're paying. But even if it's a little bit, uh, we're being asked to contribute how many thousands of dollars to the horse park every year? Which is an enterprise, and at this point, the citizens should be so sustained. How many other businesses, I can think of, I have a friend, ninety dollars, an electric business, I don't think he's ever received a dollar, a six, five. Now, getting back to the shuttle buses, that's paid, uh, two percent, nine hundred. Rent tax, I don't, first thing, that's a good story, I would certainly pose that, so, yes, you're asking, you're, you're being asked to rent the tax. I have not seen that.
Anyone else got a comment? You've already had your comment.
I didn't speak about taxes.
I thought you did. Oh, it's the Johnny Cash one.
Uh, a lot of people do not understand what the loading tax is here. Uh, we might need to let them understand where the, where they follow. Because a lot of people, um, if you tax them, uh, they will feud, you know, and probably get upset. Uh, a lot of people, uh, were looking forward to a police station we haven't got yet. We have lost one site. Uh, so, uh, a lot of people concerned, uh, we pay taxes, but what do we get for it?
Anyone else, Mr. Oquish?
As the mayor said, I spoke earlier about supporting the Johnny Cash, uh, event. I'm not here to say raise taxes, lower taxes. I agree that as properties are reevaluated, taxes go up with inflation. Uh, so this is a increase beyond inflation. But if the town needs the money, then they need to raise taxes. If they don't, they don't, they have to pay their bills. I'm just here for two suggestions of how not to raise taxes or minimize the tax rate increases in the future. This town's got to decide, are we pro-students or not? Cause I would have to guess that most student properties, because they're not homestead assumption properties, bring in more taxes than the services they require. Several developers have developed student housing outside the city limits. If that housing was inside the city limits, it probably would help our tax situation. I heard before, students talked in a disparaging way. I read the whole comprehensive plan y'all passed earlier. Student Association Senate passed a resolution asking for negative language towards students to be removed. Seventy percent of the time, the word student was used, it was in a disparaging way. So are we pro-students or not? I don't know. So I think by encouraging students and, and student housing to be developed within the city limits instead of outside in the county, we could help the tax situation. The second one is commercial. Commercial properties, as you already stated, bring in sales taxes as well as property taxes. There was an article in the paper, when the, uh, Candlewood Suites was announced, that hotels are coming to Starful but not retail. There's attractive land, I think about a hundred acres from my visual estimation in Columbus and north of forty-five, south forty-five. That's being developed for retail out there. Those things could be in Starful if we had a, we were better at attracting these things. We have a new bypass, there's plenty of land there. Uh, the city needs to look at themselves and decide, is there anything possibly we're doing to keep from attracting businesses that are coming to the Golden Triangle as a whole? So I think those two things can help the tax situation. I'm not for or against the millage increase. We need the monies, if we need the monies to bring in the commercial properties, let's raise taxes. We have to pay our bills. But I'm just making two suggestions to minimize tax increases in the future. Be more friendly to student housing and more friendly to new commercials. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak? Mr. Smith?
Good evening, Emmett Smith. Just a few comments. And I think over the years, uh, Starful's been very successful and we've been very prudent in not having to raise taxes. And that, that sends a message to people that want to come here and invest, be it retail, uh, commercial, real estate, businesses. We, we won't be prudent if we're gonna increase taxes and designate exactly what we wanted to go to. And, uh, our, our real estate and, and property here is, is value-wise, is thirty to forty percent higher than all these surrounding towns around us. So, so we, we, we sent the right message. Encourage people to invest here. Taxes will be lower. We don't want to send the wrong message to start raising taxes for no reason at all. We want to be sure that whatever we're doing is for the right reason. And, uh, through appraisals over the years, uh, we all, we, we all pay taxes, so we all know, and based on our project values, that we, we certainly paid more in taxes over the years. So, uh, I, I, I would just encourage you to, from a budget standpoint, man, is that we ought to be a zero budget every year. I, I hear a department says, well, I got it covered in the budget, I can handle it. Well, uh, that, that should not even have anything to do with it whatsoever. You should start with zero and just cause your raising revenues, that should be shared citywide and everybody. And, uh, you need to look at it and, and rebuild that budget every year. Uh, look at people that's been hired, look, look at, uh, uh, where we can invest in technology, make improvements. Look at, look at those areas. And we, and we, well, like I said, we, we, it's been tremendous, we had tremendous growth here. And I think part of it is because of our low average on taxes, the values are much higher. It's just kind of branch out a little bit and see, and you see why the mileage has to be so high sometimes. The property values are not near what there are here in this community. And that kind of sends a message, low taxes, higher values. And you'll see people want to invest, you'll see more people coming. And we don't want to send the wrong message. We want to buy the services that are needed and, uh, and I can think the taxpayers are supporting the mileage increase where if, if it's for capital improvements in an area that needs to be done. But, uh, but we can, we can, uh, our growth every year has been enough to continue to allow municipal development to grow, provide services. And, uh, and, and that's, and that's the way the citizens like to see it. I mean, that's, 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 that's encouraging. Thank you.
Anyone else? I call the public hearing to close on the first of the public hearing on tax, uh, increase. We will take a, we'll take a five minute break, ten minute break.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not so good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Octavia County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
This brings us down to mayor's business, which A and B is consent. So it brings us down now to board business. And it brings down consideration of repealing and replacing the original, uh, uh, the ordinance creating the board adjustment appeals to decrease the number of the members of the board issued. Where's Ben?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
It's all right.
Um, what I, I, this evening, before the meeting started, I provided on, on the table, a listing of the Board of Adjustment members. And there's, um, two wards that are not represented, Ward Two and Ward Four. On the, on the other side of the page is also a listing of the P and Z members as well, and the wards that they're represented. I believe Mr. McLaren brought up, added an item about appointment to a vacant seat on there. So I wanted y'all to have, that's a current, that's our most current listing. And, um, if the Board of, uh, the Board of Adjustment Appeals Ordinance is passed, the board would need to appoint two members from Ward Two and Ward Four, and then each of the seven wards would be represented.
President, you have five members, I believe.
Yes, sir, there's five.
And so I assume we would advertise for indications of interest.
Yes, sir, yes, sir, just like we, just like we did for planning zoning commission that we have, um, um, in the ordinance. I took into consideration the, the terms that the current board members have on the Board of Adjustment Appeals. And sta, to stagger those, those, um, terms so that there's not a, a large turnover at one time. And that was, that was the intent of the ordinance, it included that, and like I said, there's two seats, so there'd be staggered terms. And that's, and we're lucky that the wards are represented, they're not double represented, not double covered, so it, it should be a smooth transition for that.
So we'd need a, a motion tonight to approve the ordinance that, um, that we're talking about here on the Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
Yes, sir.
In addition to authorizing advertising for those two additional members?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and the resolution as well, that's included, to cover the cost of that or legal, uh, legal ads and, um, fees.
Well, let me read out then, the, the motion, which would be to approve the ordinance, amending ordinance number two thousand and five dash five, Appendix A, Article Six, Section J of Ordinance Number nineteen ninety-two dash oh one, and Chapter Two, Article Six of Ordinance Number nineteen eighty-six dash five, to amend revise regulations governing the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, including meetings, rules, procedures, variances, and administrative appeals for the City of Starkville, in Delano County, Mississippi. And I'm not going to read the, 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 the full body of the new ordinances, but it does consolidate, um, previous ordinances and provides for a body of adjustment appeals that would have seven members, uh, one from each ward.
Do we have a second to the motion?
Second.
To the motion, the second. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. All those opposed, nay.
And we would also need to, uh, consider the resolution, which would establish application fees. Um, and I would move approval of, uh, the, the following fees, um, that are on the back of your packet for a variance application. It would establish a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars, an administrative appeal, seventy-five dollars, and then a further appeal to the Board of Alderman, fifty dollars. Currently, we do not have application fees associated or with, um, with making, uh, these requests to this body. And while there are costs associated with, with hearing the appeals, whether it be through publications, um, or copies or certified letters, et cetera. So I would move approval of this resolution establishing application fees as enumerated for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals for the City of Starkville.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion with the second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay.
And lastly, I'd move approval of, uh, advertising for the two vacant physicians that we've just created here, uh, for Ward Two and Ward Four, uh, for application and membership of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
Second.
Motion in the second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, sir.
I can be a consideration to feel the ordinance, uh, related to amendments and adoption of an order to clarify and consolidate said ordinance amendments and to set rates for solid waste collection.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and Board, uh, still a number of issues remain for discussion. This draft ordinance will be reviewed by the Infrastructure Trash Committee, uh, in the near future, and we'll be back up for your consideration at the next meeting.
Brings us down to discussion of the authorization, authorized city burn permit practice.
Mr. Mayor and Board, uh, you heard tonight from a number of citizens, a very small number of citizens relative to, uh, the things that were suffered in, uh, the, uh, most recent major burn within the corporate limits, major commercial burn within the corporate limits of the City of Starkville, uh, affecting all the surrounding area. Uh, this, of course, was the, uh, uh, development overhaul off, uh, Academy Road, uh, which had direct effects on the apartment complexes, uh, to the west, uh, the condos in Academy Village, the homes in Academy Place, uh, a section of homes in Timberco subdivision, and even across South Montgomery Street in terms of a number of calls about, uh, the smoke and, uh, respiratory related problems. Uh, ash, uh, uh, smoke, uh, for about two solid weeks. Uh, significant suffering on the part of the citizenry in that area. Uh, I know that a number of you received, uh, as I did, uh, and in my case, dozens of phone calls and emails about the particular situation, and I viewed it on a daily basis. Uh, if such a thing had occurred in any of the other wards in the city, uh, you would be as concerned as I am about this particular situation. Uh, you, you would have to have seen it, uh, to believe what was going on in that particular location. Uh, we have talked, uh, oh, some, uh, months ago about the burn permit process, the burn policy of the city. Uh, and we've talked about the difference between commercial burns, and we've talked about the difference between, uh, small residential burns. And we need to try to finalize, uh, this particular situation, if at all possible, tonight. The, uh, citizens, the residents of, of Ward Three are very, very concerned about this particular issue. Uh, as would be the residents in any of the wards had what occurred in this burn occurred in your respective wards. Uh, the fire chief put on the table tonight, uh, just for, uh, consideration, a revised burn permit process, which, which greatly, uh, uh, tightens, uh, the burn policy of the city. Uh, I think all things considered, uh, I would like to go a step further in this. Again, you would have to have seen this to believe it. And thus, I would like to move that the city prohibit commercial burning, not residential, commercial burning within the city limits of the City of Starkville.
Would it affect it immediately?
Effective immediately.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, effective immediately, that we cease to have any further commercial burn permits within the City of Starkville.
Excuse me, Alderman Mills.
You said commercial burning. What if I bought a piece of property here in Starkville? And it had trees and so forth on it, and I cut them and did it myself? Is that, uh, I'm just a resident. I think we ought to have it some way that it's, burning is banned within the city limits other than what's prescribed by residential.
Oh, by homeowners?
Yeah.
Or, or, uh, the tenants, tenants, perhaps? All right, let's think about that a minute. Roger?
Well, there, there is inside the commercial burn, the current, uh, burn ordinance, two levels. One is lot upkeep, which is one small pile, um, of trash. Second is what you're commonly referred to as commercial burning. There is, there are two levels within our commercial burn, uh, ordinance. And that, and that will give you the opportunity to, uh, what Mr. Mills referred. You're still going to get a large amount of smoke. Just obviously piles are going to be small, you're still going to get smoke. I think our biggest problem with any, any kind of burning is what's called as the mixing surface, as how high it is, temperature inversion. That's, there's our problem, and obviously we can't control it.
That's what I'm telling you, that if you're an individual burning a ward and pile, it would result in the same thing as a commercial burn.
Okay, uh, Alderman Mills, so you're suggesting we might then consider a prohibition on all burns within the corporate limits of the City of Starkville, except those by occupants of homes, whether they be homeowners or tenants? Is that correct?
Yeah.
Lot upkeep, a lot, lot upkeep, that is a small.
Lot upkeep by homeowners or tenants or?
That's, that's someone who has, uh, several, lives on maybe a four or five to ten acre plot, and they've got limbs all in. And we've got several in the city who do that. Uh, they keep a pile year round, they just go it on it. Once every year, two years, three years, they'll come to us and they'll ask for a burn permit for that pile. It's different from the residential burn, I mean, that there are distances that are totally different. The only difference really between the, uh, lot upkeep and the commercial burn is the size of the pile. There's no fans required on it, and obviously the cops, that's the only difference.
Oh.
And there's not a lot of that that goes on. We, we make.
Are these, uh, for lack of any better way to put it, vacant lots? A person owns just a little parcel of land within the city?
No, sir, I, I could give you an example of, uh, Mr. Peek, the, the con agent of Rock Hill Road. He's, he's got quite a bit of acreage. He's got the concrete that follows, he just picks the limbs up, brings up one pile, and he generally, once a year, he'll come up and get a burn permit to burn that pile.
Right, of course, he lives on the property also.
Exactly.
Do, do the type of fires you're talking about, the lot upkeep, have, have you known of them to create the massive amount of complaints that this most recent quote unquote, "commercial" fire caused, Roger?
No. Primarily, the biggest reason is your dead, dead limbs. Lems that are laid from some time season down. Burn up, burn hot, burn clean.
Uh, Alderman Mills, would that be acceptable to prohibit burning within the corporate limits of the City of Starkville, with the exception of lot upkeep and residential? Now, if that becomes or continues to be a problem, we can revisit that?
Revisit, yeah.
Would that be satisfactory? Okay, then that is my motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second.
Roger, just, what a warming, I know it's hard to imagine anybody needing a warming fire right now, but how would that fall under this? Does someone even get a permit if they're doing a warming fire?
Typically, we've not, we've not issued any permits for warming fires, but now we do have a, a handle on warming fires that do not allow them. Uh, from, or they're only allowed from October around the end of March. We'll let it go a little bit one way or the other. We do have some issues with warming fires, we're not trying to typically try to burn a little bit more, a little bit bigger than they should, but this is sort of different than anything else, it's a little maintenance issue that we have to keep in check.
But not presently permitted or anything?
No, it's not.
They're just done? But an aye is kept on, is what you say?
Yes, yes, and I'm sure we know anybody who's been in the company. We, we know, we're well.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, that we prohibit commercial, further commercial burning at the city limits of the city, except for private residential home maker and lot.
Now, as the motion was originally stated, yeah.
Ms. Tindall has that. All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, nay. Thank you. That brings us down to the, uh, repair of the Octavia County. That brings us down to the repair of the Oktibah County Heritage Museum. If you look on your, uh, if you look on the table, we have a lowest bid we can see, Crabtree, which they have a, combined, they have a roof bid of approximately seven hundred, $7,820. You got plus tax, but there's no tax involved. Seven hundred twenty-five dollar, uh, bent roof ridge system. And then, a six-inch gutter, that's about $1,795.
Bill, I just want to ask real quick, pending this, where will that take us as far as the repairs to the museum?
The one we're asking tonight is, is the low bid of Crabtree, which was basically $10,340. Since we started this process about a year and a half ago, we had to do something. We wanted some of the face up, and some of the dent. To add that we give a contingency fund to take up that amount of damage. It was just like fifteen thousand dollars. So, because we want to actually know how much is involved in getting the roof to go off. Basic roof structure of $10,340. But we will, we'll give some funds or a principal disbursement fund to places on the roof. We don't expect to extend it, but do reach...
Your requesting is a not-to-exceed amount of fifteen thousand?
Well, we say five thousand by waiting a year, didn't we? When the last price, we had around twenty for all this?
No, basically, the price, the sign, Crabtree's price was basically the same as what was a year and a half ago.
We still have some other items that are not being addressed, such as...
Yes, sir. One of which was the, uh, I noticed in the, in the agenda that put the duck work, we haven't gotten quotes on the duck work yet. And also, remember back, one of these previous, they did the first, the most critical thing first, which was... And I assumed I would come back at a later time with the pricing on the other items that we talked about.
Just as a question, have we heard anything from the county on their potential involvement?
Ms. Broke, can you address that?
I can. Uh, I visited with the county manager, as you're supposed to be. He said the county shares the cost of the bus, and that we prefer to take it in a piecemeal fashion, much like this is, we do move the CIOs. Some of our estimates for the cost of the building that we've laid out are still in flux due to some of the orphaned facilities we were considering. So, the effort is to give this budget to the county, and then make sure they get some budget, because our standing is definitely not good. So, hopefully, we can duck the roof and the duck work, and we prioritize this and give all the...
Alderman Cox, before I make the motion, do you know if we have a line item already aside, put aside for this? Because we've been talking about it for the last year, and I just want to make sure that we have a line item for our ongoing contribution for the museum, and not specifically one for maintenance.
Then, just a, I guess a general motion to take from the general fund, and then adjust as needed. I'd like to move, then, that we provide to the Heritage, Oktibah County Heritage Museum, for the purposes of repair work, an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
And acceptance of the...
Oh, and acceptance of the lowest bid from Crabtree Incorporated.
For the roof work and the vent system, the ridge of the, of the garden.
The passage of time. We have shared your joy at the birth of your children, and proudly, we have watched them grow. We've taken care of your health care needs during the good times and the not-so-good. Your parents and grandparents have depended upon us. Together, we have shared the struggles and the wonders of life. At Oktibah County Hospital, we are celebrating thirty years of being your lifelong choice in health care.
The committee's requested a symbolic pardon be considered from the board, and it seemed appropriate that we appoint someone to review that potential symbolic pardon, and who better than our own Judge Ashy to, to consider that? I will, though, in full disclosure, though, admit to you that Judge Ashy was, in fact, at the concert the night in question in nineteen sixty-five. Um, and, but he assures me that he can still remain impartial as he considers that symbolic pardon. And I would just ask that we refer this issue to him, and we do so in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say briefly, um, Mr. Cox, I'm not in opposition to any matter dealing to the Johnny Cash event. But let me just say, for the record, from a legal and ethical point of view, and I'm gonna have to respectfully dissent to this motion. The reason is, as a practicing member of the bar, I am prohibited from making any request to the municipal judge in any matter. So, that's why I don't practice in municipal court here in the city of Starkville. So, I'll make sure that I'm clean from ethical and a legal point of view, and must protect my life and my livelihood. So, for those reasons, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote against this, uh, this motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Uh, we will move on. Airport is all, oh, no, I got one item. Elf, this is planning, zoning, in which we need a appointment to finish the term.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and Board, the city has advertised for several weeks, requesting indications of interest for appointment to the unexpired term representing Ward Three, uh, the term of Gloria Liddell. We have just been informed that Dr. Jerry Emerson, you will recall having appointed Dr. Emerson to the, uh, Justice Complex Citizens Committee that is, is reviewing issues related to the justice complex. Dr. Emerson has agreed to serve if appointed. And I would like to move that Dr. Jerry Emerson be appointed to this unexpired term representing Ward Three on the Planning-Zoning Commission.
Second.
We have a motion, a second.
Um, second, yeah, we advertised the vacancy, so anyone else interested in it can submit letters of interest?
We have done so for several weeks now.
Have gotten a letter of interest?
We have not.
So, and, I mean, I, I know Dr. Emerson, and thought he did a great job on the committee. I just don't know how we can, we can approa...it seems like we're getting the cart before the horse, not to belabor this, um, to consider this tonight, one on the agenda. We don't have the actual letter, it seems like, let's put it on the agenda in two weeks, and let's rock and roll.
Oh, Dr. Emerson indicated verbal agreement and interest in the spot, and the time did not remain to write a letter.
We have a, we have a motion and a second. At this time, we'll vote, we'll show hands. All those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Mr. Emerson is appointed.
Mr. Mayor, let me just say briefly, I'm gonna try to be quiet. The only reason I voted against that was because, just a procedural matter that the gentleman from Ward Five raised. But as to the qualities, um, Dr. Emerson's very meticulous and authoritative individual. I served with him on the Municipal Building Committee, I just wanted it to be clear.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Brings us down to departmental business. Airport is consent. Brings us down to building codes. Ben, where are you? You hide behind Mr. O'Quiston right there.
I was trying to. Mr. Mayor, um, and Board, there's been a change on the agenda. One of the items...
Item three has been removed.
Item three has been removed. I was gonna bring it up when we were going over the consent agenda, and I didn't feel that was appropriate. But item three is, uh, be, being removed. It'll probably be brought back in, in the September fourth meeting, to some minor things that need to be taken care of. The first item is a rezoning by Mr. Jeremy Taber from, to, uh, rezone property from an R-three to an R-five, located on the eastern side of South Montgomery Street at the intersection of Yellow Jacket Drive. This is the property that's known as the Gail's Apartment Complex. Mr. Taber has purchased the property and is planning extensive renovations of the buildings. The, um, the neighborhood adjacent is owned R-five to the, to the south and also to the east. Uh, the properties to the west are zoned R-three. And, um, this is the, um, the changing conditions was the reason that the P and Z Board voted unanimously to recommend approval for the rezoning, and there were no public comments received at the hearing. I'd add, too, I probably received two phone calls when the advertisements, the notification letters went out, and the advertisers went out in the paper. There's also some vacant property, there's probably a vacant portion of the property to the south that Mr. Taber intends to redevelop at a future time to, uh, complement his development to the west, the Annabella Development that's currently being built opposite, on the opposite side of South Montgomery Street.
Mr. Mayor and Board, the property in question here, uh, particularly the Gail's Apartments, if you're familiar with those, have been in a state of decline for some years now. Uh, what, uh, Jeremy Taber proposes is a significant improvement to that property, as well as additional development to the south. All of this conforming to what is around that immediate area. And so, I would move that, uh, the city grant a zoning change from R-three to R-five to this property, uh, based upon, uh, the requirements relative to state law that, uh, conditions have changed in the area which justify zoning, the public convenience, need, necessity, uh, demand this particular type of change. And of course, not part of state law, it will be a significant improvement to the area.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Are you aware that it was originally zoned C-two? The city without the property owners knowing it was zoned to an R-three?
I was, I was not aware of that, boys.
The second item is the Murphy sixty-six seventy-four subdivision final plat. What this is, is a single lot subdivision for Walmart to sell the land that's currently occupied by the Murphy Oil Gas Station, located at ten-ten Highway twelve west. The property has roadway frontage, but there's no curb cut or driveway that gives direct access to the property from Highway twelve. So, Walmart and Murphy Oil have, I believe it's about a twenty-five-page cross-access easement agreement that will be executed and recorded at the same time as the final plat. And there's a, a space on the plat to show that that's being recorded as well. P and Z unanimously recommended approval of the final plat as well.
One of the most confusing plats I've looked at in quite a while.
Yes, sir, it's, it is, it's, that the Crossgates plat had been replatted several times over the years, and, and, um, in doing a single lot subdivision, it was felt like that'd be the easiest way to try to carve out the piece of property since it straddles a planted lot and some other property that's, some common property that's on the Walmart side.
So, they're simply subdividing for purpose of sale?
Yes, sir.
Gasoline?
Yes, sir.
Uh, uh...
The gasoline, the station, the fuel center, the canopy and the fuel pumps.
At the, at the current Walmart.
Yes, sir, and, and I believe Mr. Herndon, who, who was the surveyor, said that, uh, I believe he's doing a hundred and twenty-five of these around Alabama, Mississippi, Tennessee. He's, he's doing a hundred and twenty-five of them himself. So, it's, apparently Walmart's doing this nationwide.
I move approval.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Skip number three.
I move three, skip.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir, the last item is the preliminary plat for the Cornerstone Industrial Park. This is a twenty-nine lot industrial, uh, twenty-nine industrial and commercial lots located on two-hundred-and-twenty-four-point-three acres. The property's owned by Ocida, which the city of Starkville is a partner. The city will provide water and fire, water for fire protection, sanitary sewer service, while Bluefield Water Association will provide potable water. The final plating will be done in phases over several years as the lots are developed and sold. Those, those lot configurations are, are definitely going to change. Mr. Thornell is here as well. The, as the lots are developed and sold, the final plats will come forward. But that's, I wanted to emphasize to y'all, the same as I did for the Planning-Zoning Commission, that, that those configurations are going to, you're gonna see a lot of changes in those as those final plats come forward. Once again, the Planning-Zoning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the preliminary plat.
I move approval of the preliminary plat for the Cornerstone Industrial Park.
Second.
And motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All, thank you, sir.
Mayor and Board, I move approval of the claims docket, log is second, you have it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the claims docket. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Uh, the second request is that of, uh...
It's gonna be from, uh, the College of Engineering Professor Dalton. And we're, I'm asking that the city clerk's office be allowed to participate in a study that the College of, uh, Engineering is proposing. And it's just to, uh, go through the workflow, the processes in the city clerk's office to see if there's some way to improve efficiency or determine if the personnel is at an adequate level and to value the procedures, work procedure.
And what happens if they come back and say you got too many people to work for efficient?
Then they will provide me with a, a way to do that, and this we will bring back to the board.
You're gonna bring back somebody to fire?
No, we're gonna bring back someone to relocate.
Mark, you ask a serious point, you know, and I, I think you're to be commended for being willing to undergo such an evaluation, because, you know, we all can look for improvement and actually step up and say, "Here, look at my department." I think that's to be commended, and I...
And, and the other thing, other, uh, thing with that is that he's going to, if, you know, when you do something for a long time, you get set in your ways, and there may be a better way to actually perform some of the functions that we're performing.
Good for you. I move approval of the authorization to engage the services of MSU's Department of Industrial and Systems Engineering to conduct a six sigma project within the Office of City Clerk.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Thank you, Mark.
Where is your copy of that, you may look for campus, we have, we can't get that on campus. If we can't, I'll say, all of you have a copy of the name.
Yeah.
Hold, hold it up, back, the copy.
No, I can't hear it, somewhere...
If you apply this copy, it'll, uh, take a few minutes. Put in order of the interview, one, two, three, four, five, please. Pass them here to me.
For what purpose, Mr. Mayor?
So, we can, uh, determine if we want to have, uh, any one of these back for a brief another interview. Who doesn't have a copy of this? You've got my copy, sir. You got one?
You've got my copy, thank you.
Pass it down.
Just a few comments. Personally, whatever is the will of the mayor and the board, I'm not really prepared to frank them. I would prefer waiting till the next meeting. We do have a, um, something, Personnel Officer that's done a very good job, as far as I know. So, I would like to have some time to think about it. We just had the interview, we're briefing to about five, ten this afternoon. Certainly, the Washington State Justice Bureau, of course, we're on a very important department head level position at a annual salary, probably, that's gonna range more or less, in my opinion, according to what I've seen, possibly fifty, seventy thousand dollars. I don't see any real urgency of it, but that may just be a minority viewpoint here. But I would prefer waiting. Of course, Mr. Young is doing a good job. I think he saved money, saved a lot of money. I would really like to just continue to use him, uh, as, as long as he is available to be used. But whatever's the will of the board, uh, I'll, I'll greatly respect that.
I think basically, a royal opportunity is getting, kind of, David Mike says, I feel like this might be the personal promotion.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Um, I'm prepared to rank them, if you'd be able to. That would be my preference for us to rank them, so that we can see if we can call them back for a second interview. If we don't, we're going, well, we're going to continue with this process, and, you know, we're going to be coming back four months and saying, well, we haven't done anything about personnel directly. Just trying to get the process speeded up a little bit.
Does anyone else of them in the old Perkins object to ranking at this point?
I'd be glad to rank, but I'm not ready to make this final decision.
No, this, this, he's ranked back five decisions. We'll rank them, they'll talk about it.
What, you want us to do, pass them to you?
Yeah, I want to look at them.
That's fine.
We're ready to go into the closed session to discuss the executive session. Now, here, motion is to move into closed session, for consent.
Mr. Mayor and board, I would move that we approve the items designated for the consent agenda at the start of the meeting. Which I'd be happy to read.
No.
No.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye, please.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Now, here, motion, we go into closed session to discuss, uh, uh, items for executive session.